Called to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 21st, 2018. Please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlecker, please call it all.
Yes, Commissioner Stevenson.
Here.
Commissioner Navlock.
Here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Here.
Commissioner Casey is not at the meeting tonight. And Chair Schwartz.
Here.
All right, our first order of business this evening is to adapt our agenda.
So.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson and second by Stevens. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Agenda's been approved. Next, we have the approval of our minutes of the May 17th meeting.
Vote to approve.
Second. Motion by Heikala, second by Navlock. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand.
Abstand. Opposed? Motion passes. Two abstentions. Commissioners Stevenson and Schmalki, abstand. All right, our first order of business is Planning Case 17-26, Phillips Architects, Site Plan Approval Extension for Walzer Auto Dealership. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, the applicant is requesting one-year extension of their site plan approval to September 21st, 2019. Back in September 2017, they were granted site plan approval for a new car dealership. Site plan approval is valid for one year, and hence the applicant is requesting a one-year extension. Planning Commission makes a recommendation, the City Council can grant the extension upon the finding that the proposed use or uses are consistent with the current zoning at the time of their request, and that project design meets applicable city code and standards in effect at the time the request is made. The applicant is requesting the extension to allow for additional time to arrange financing for the project. The proposal has not changed and remains in conformance with the land use plan and city code. Staff is recommending that the Commission move to recommend approval of the one-year extension for their site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission.
In Planning Case 17-26, I recommend the Commission move to approve the one-year extension of the site plan approval. Second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Schmalki. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Just to clarify, we don't need to have a public hearing on this?
No, we do not, correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. Motion passes with Commissioner Stevenson opposed. This is a decision, or recommendation by the Planning Commission and decision by the City Council at the July 3rd meeting. Next order of new business, Planning Case 17-20, an extension of a site plan approval for a 128-unit apartment building at 3525 to 3551 Coon Rapids Boulevard for ground architects and engineers. Mr. Harlecker.
Again, this is, applicant is also requesting a one-year extension to July 20th, 2019. They were granted site plan approval on July 20th, 2017. Again, the Commission can make a recommendation to approve, and Council can approve the extension upon the finding that the proposed use or uses are consistent with the current zoning, and the project meets applicable city code standards included in this section. As with the previous applicant, they are requesting the extension to allow the applicant additional time to arrange financing. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission move to recommend approval of the one-year extension.
Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
In Planning Case 17-20, I'll move to recommend approval of a one-year extension of the site plan approval.
Second.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Heikala. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Chair Schwartz is opposed. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission with decision by the City Council at the July 3rd meeting. Next order of business, Planning Case 18-9, preliminary plat for Lone Ridge, 125th Lane, and Shenandoah Boulevard, BL Holdings. Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to subdivide a 5.94-acre parcel into six single-family lots. The property is outlined here in black. It's on the west side of Shenandoah Boulevard, north of Main Street. This is Ashley Oaks here, Shenandoah, then the Belfini sod farms are over across the other side of Shenandoah Boulevard. Here's their preliminary plat. If you can see, it's six lots, all will be facing 125th Lane, and will access the property. The driveways will come off of 125th Lane. All the lots meet the dimensional requirements of the LDR2 zoning district. The four lots in the middle here are a little over 11,000 square feet. The one on the corner here is slightly larger because the dimensional requirements for corner lots are larger. The sixth lot down on the north end is quite a bit larger, it's about 50,000 square feet. It encompasses a wetland area and a ditch. The buildable area is on the south side of the lot. This area here is wetland. They're also including a park dedication of about 20,000 square feet on the north end of the plat. This will allow future access to come from Shenandoah Boulevard into the park to the west. This is city-owned property right here. There is a large, almost I would call it, almost call it a cliff or a bluff, right in through here, and as part of the grading plan, what they're doing is taking that ridge and pulling it back towards the property line and creating a retaining wall system, two-tiered system, to get these three lots a better backyard. The retaining walls will be engineered and approved by the Engineering Department. Drainage will flow along the back down to a retention area here, and then eventually into the ditch here. What is kind of unique to this plat is the sewer hookup is up here on the south end of the site, and the property drops off quite a bit towards this end. To address that, what they've done is they're installing a private forest main to service the lots, and it'll be going down the front along 125th, and then tying into the public system around the bend here on the south end of the plat. Each of these lots will tie into that forest main, which has the pump down in this end, and each individual lot will have a sewage grinder in it that will pump it out to the two-inch forest main, and then down to here. City Engineer has been working with the applicant on that design, and they're comfortable with the design of the system. There will be a homeowners association for the maintenance of the retaining wall system, as well as the private sewage system, up to the point where it connects with the public The Park and Recreation Commission has reviewed the plat, and they were okay with this land down here meeting the park dedication requirements for the plat. One of the conditions of staff's recommendation is that, it's actually in the Engineers' memo, that the developer provide an escrow for future trail development from Shenandoah Boulevard to the west edge of their plat. Staff is recommending the Commission move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat, with the conditions that it complies with Title 11, all engineering comments are addressed, the park dedication requirement is met with the dedication of the 20,045 square feet, excuse me, at the north end of the plat, and one street tree per lot is required. The corner lot will be required two street trees, one on this side and then one over on this side also. The applicant is in the audience tonight if you have any questions.
Mr. Harlecker, there's no need to have a condition of the escrow?
That's in the City Engineers' memo.
All right, thank you.
I mean, if you want to add it as a fifth condition, that's certainly fine.
But it's included in the engineering comment?
Yep.
All right. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker at this time? Is there anything the petitioner would like to add?
Mr. Chairman, members of-
Please state your name and your address, please.
Larry Olson, representing BL Holdings, 7617, 162nd Avenue in Ham Lake. Just here to, Mr. Harlecker did a pretty thorough job of presenting the project to you, and so I'm just here to answer any questions again, or listen to your comments.
All right, thank you. All right, we do need to have a public hearing on this matter, so at this time I will open a public hearing in Planning Case 18-9, preliminary plat for Lone Ridge, 125th Lane, and Shenandoah Boulevard. Anyone wishing to speak at the public hearing? Please come up to the microphone, give your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Marlon Henning, 2030, 127th Avenue Northwest, Coon Rapids, Minnesota, 55448. Yeah, one of the questions I had is that for the park and the lots, are they all going to be the access to 125th Lane and not directly from Shenandoah Boulevard?
Correct.
Okay. That was my main concern, that it wouldn't be, you know, dumping the traffic only in Shenandoah, but everything would be going through 125th Lane just for traffic congestion and that, so, and for a safety concern. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Mr. Harlecker, didn't you say the park would actually butt out Shenandoah?
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, the access will probably be, they'll install a crosswalk across here and tie in from the trail as it come across from the east side of Shenandoah, possibly through either that cul-de-sac that's up here, or possibly through the Belfini property. It'll be a crosswalk across Shenandoah, then it'll tie into the park system on the west side.
I guess I have a further question.
Go ahead.
Is there going to be any, like, parking for the park or anything? Or how are you going to access the park, you know, for the parking or anything like that? That'd be my next question.
Yeah, at this point, that level of detail has not been discussed by the Park and Recreation Commission. The only thing they're looking at at this point is having this for a trail connection.
Okay.
To get people from the east side of Shenandoah across here, and then into the park.
Down the road, that could be a concern, if, you know, if there, a lot of people could be accessing the park or something, like where are people going to park? Or if it's just going to be, you know, a trail to walk through or something, I guess that would be a concern down the road, for like where are people going to park? They're just going to park on the 125th Lane, or are they going to be parking on Shenandoah?
Yeah.
I guess I would just like to have that noted as a concern for the Commission. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Henning.
We appreciate it.
Commissioner Stevenson?
Mr. Navlock.
Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing?
Hi, I'm Brenda Tom. I live at 2070 127th Avenue Northwest. This is my husband, Gabe Schlackey. We're a little, maybe a little late to the ballgame, just really, so our property is the second lot in on 127th Avenue. A lot of concerns about sewage. Obviously, we're concerned too about the displacement of a lot of wildlife in that area as well. And to take, I'm sorry, I missed the name here, but as far as Shenandoah Boulevard, there's a crosswalk, there's a lot of concerns too about traffic never following that 30 mile per hour speed limit, so there's a lot of concerns there. So I guess first and foremost is, how is that sewage line going to impact our property that, the back of our property that is up against the new development? So I don't know if you can speak to that at all, or if we can see what the engineers have said, if it's an issue at all?
Well, Chair and Commissioners, the lots will access, there'll be a sewer line that runs this way, and tie in up here. So these lots will have individual tie-ins to that sewer line.
Mm-hmm.
And it'll be forced down this way, typically like any other sewage system.
But the driveways are on this side?
Pardon?
I'm sorry, I'm just, the driveways for these new properties.
The driveways will come out this way to 125th. And the sewer line will run in front of, between the houses and the street, along and through here, and then tie into the public system in the manhole.
Which is my backyard. I mean, essentially, it's like right there.
You're up here, you're here. It's going the opposite direction from where you're-
Oh, that's the south side. So, okay, so I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
So we're over here.
You're over here.
Okay, and where's the park that's-
This little piece right here.
Okay, that's where that is, based on my map, here.
Yeah, but kind of cuts, it cuts across that north end, so the left side is- Across there.
Okay.
So, pardon, it's up here.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
If I'm reading this correctly, the end of the sewer line will be a little more than 300 feet from the property line that you're in.
Okay.
So it won't, there'll be 300 feet spacing, that park and that wetland is in between where the sewer line ends, and your home.
Okay, so I guess the other part of this is, I know we have, I mean, it's the Oaks of Shenandoah, we have some pretty large oaks in our backyard that may be dipping over that property line. Is that going to be a factor for us as homeowners, that we will need to mitigate these trees or remove them?
At this point, no.
No, okay.
Yeah, nothing's changing on this end, other than-
Okay.
The city will get ownership of the parkland here. And at some point, the Park and Recreation Commission has looked at this at their last meeting, and said, "We'd like to get a trail through here." The location of that trail hasn't been determined, nothing like that, it hasn't gotten into that level of detail for the discussion purposes yet.
Okay.
So this entire area that's being covered right now is an enormous forest. Has there been any kind of environmental impact assessment on this area?
No, there has not.
Is that because it's not designated as an actual wetland?
Well, the wetland's not being, wetland is here.
Right, it's pretty close.
Yeah, they've got, they'll be working with a Coon Creek Watershed and filling a portion of it right here. They're allowed to fill the minimum amount of wetland.
Okay.
And I believe that's what's here to accommodate the drainage pond.
Okay. Is, sorry, sorry.
The north end from here, that way, is untouched.
Where the parkland is, is the intent to level that entire forest to put in a park?
At this point, no.
Correct.
They haven't gotten to that level of discussion yet.
Understood.
And is there a way that we can continue to be apprised of what's going to happen with that space?
Work with the Park and Recreation Commission.
Okay.
They're the ones who will determine, as well as the City Council, how the park is ultimately going to be developed, if developed at all. It might be that they're just, the development right now is kind of more towards the west end of that park, and this might just be here to allow a trail connection through it. So that might be all that goes in there.
Okay, okay. Do you have anything else?
Coon Rapids is a very beautiful place to live. People need a place to live, so we understand expansion. This is definitely digging in to the beautiful area that is natural and wooded and old.
Yeah.
And it's unfortunate to see. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Don Mentor. I live at 12581 Quinn, Street Northwest. I'm in the Shenandoah, I'm in that Ashley Oaks Town Homes. And just a little bit of clarification, where they're talking about the park, all that area in back is parkland. It's just a continuation, because we've got notification of the pond being completely our responsibility, even though the land all on the north edge of that pond back there, that holding pond, is all parkland. And I assume it's just going to be a continuation of that park.
Chair, Commissioners, correct. What the Speaker is referring to is this area up in here is currently all parkland. And what this little, the piece on the north end will provide a connection from here out to Shenandoah Boulevard, probably for just, at this point, it's a trail connection. It's proposed through there.
And as a board member of the Association, we have discussed this, and we personally, sure, we would love to see it stay wilderness all the time, but we do not have an objection to what this is all about at this point.
All right.
Our sewer connection was our only concern, and you've already addressed that in your program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, close the public hearing. And Commission?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Navlock.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Harlecker and City Staff. The first question is, that is a very busy street, 125th Lane, as well as Shenandoah. Is there any, it's just a straight yes or no question, is there any street parking going to be allowed on 125th Lane?
At this point, it would be treated like any other city street, with parking is allowed with certain limitations.
Okay, because that is a kind of a narrow street, and there is a lot of traffic with the homes in behind there. That was just a concern of mine about street parking on that narrow, high-traffic street. The second question is in regard to the private sewer, and the, I understand that the City Engineering Staff is happy with that. Could you speak a little bit more to that? I have, with such a high-traffic street, with through-traffic, and it being connected up to the sewer there, and it's private, what kind of assurances does the City of Coon Rapids have in regards to the maintenance of that prior sewer infrastructure and their uptake system, and how they're going to be feeding in to the public sewer line?
Are you asking for operational features of the system?
I guess I am.
I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Okay.
As Mr. Harlecker mentioned, that there'd be a, their homeowners association is being formed to, and part of their duties will be to maintain the private sewer system, and the City is requiring that there, as part of the homeowners association documents, that there's a maintenance agreement in there, you know, for maintaining and upkeep and servicing and just, you know, inspection as required. We do have a private company that, this is what they do, is they have their technicians, you know, on staff for 24-hour, seven-day-a-week service calls. That is, you know, what one of their, what they specialize is, is maintaining these private systems. So you can contract with them, and they take care of the inspections and maintenance and that type of thing. So it doesn't fall on the individuals to have to know what to do with the system or anything like that. It's just set up in the documents that they're under contract to come in and do the maintenance as required, and the Engineering Department will be reviewing these and approving, you know, the maintenance schedule and that type of thing.
Okay, thank you. I just have a follow-up question for Mr. Harlecker. Are there any other private sewer systems as proposed here in other parts of Coon Rapids?
Not that I'm aware of.
So is this completely unproven, unexperienced, new in our area, or is it something that has been used previously, just not-
Again, I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Okay.
I don't believe it's been used in the city.
Okay.
I can't speak to if it's been used in surrounding communities at all yet.
Okay.
As part of going through, you know, just talking with staff before we moved on to this preliminary planning stage, we did get to several cities in the metro area that do have these types of systems, so, you know, they could talk to them, gave them, you know, examples of where they are used. They are used extensively in some of your lakes, lakes areas, you know, where they wanted to eliminate private septic systems, you know, around the lake. So they are being used extensively around the state and increasingly being used, you know, especially in instances like this where it's kind of an infill-type situation, it's just can't be served in, you know, the conventional way. And so it's a good, it's a, it's a, it's a system that's been around for 40 years.
Okay.
So it's nothing, nothing that's just new in the last couple of years or anything like that.
Okay, good. Thank you for that thorough answer.
Sure.
And my last question is for Mr. Harlecker, in regards to, has there been any, I know it's, I'm kind of being a stickler, but it's only six lots, and there's a ton of lots and townhomes behind there, further down on 125th Lane. But I have to ask this question, with, I know it's six lots only, but has there been a traffic analysis done in regards to Shenandoah traffic onto 125th- been a traffic analysis done in regards to Shenandoah traffic onto One Twenty-Fifth Lane?
No, there has not.
Alright, that's it, that's all.
Anyone else with, uh, any questions or comments? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
Mr. Harlecker, I'm just wondering, that area to the west of that, of the six houses, is that developable, developable at all?
The Stein Dell, second addition? Yes, it is. Uh, we've been in conversations with the property owner. Uh, they are looking at, uh, splitting that lot into two, and putting two houses on there. They haven't come forward with, uh, application yet, but, uh, um, and then just have them face, the, the front would face One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth, so they'd be, um, narrow deep lots.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I, uh, didn't you just do a, a lot split or replanning?
Yes.
Either that lot or something right in this vicinity?
Yep, uh, Chair and Commissioner Stevenson, you're, you're correct. Um, the property owner did come in, um, prior to the plat, the land north of One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth and south of One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth was one lot. Uh, they came in and split it, so the north side is Lot One, Block One, and the south side is Lot One, Block Two, so they're separate lots now.
The, the, and you're talking about the property that's, um, to the, to the west of what we're looking-
Directly to the west, yep.
Yeah, is what was, okay, thank you.
Yeah, straight west.
Attorney Commissioner, anyone ready for a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
In planning case eighteen dash nine, I move that the commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Lone Ridge with the conditions stated in the staff report.
A second.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Schmokey, any further discussion?
I'm wondering if we should put a number five in there for what they, he was talking about with, uh-
The escrow?
The escrow. Or, I mean, you know, just to make sure that it's, doesn't get lost in another piece of paper.
I would, I'll, I'll refer to the, uh, city attorney.
Commissioner notes it is in the, um, engineering-
Right.
-comments, and one of the, the approval items, I think it was, I lost it just now.
Right, all engineering comments be addressed, but I just wanted to make sure that, that one with the, gets, you know, doesn't get-
If you want to prioritize it, you could certainly add it as a fifth. I think it'll be addressed through the engineering comments, either way is fine.
Okay.
I'll accept it as a family amendment.
Okay. So, number five, to make sure that-
Can I suggest some language?
Sure, sure, you can do that.
How about, uh, the applicant provide an escrow to cover the, uh, construction of the, uh, future trail from Shenandoah through the, through the parkland, in an amount determined by the engineering department?
Perfect.
Sounds good.
This land, uh, that's going to parks, that's in lieu of the park fee, correct?
Yes.
Pardon?
The land that they're, um, proposing as part of the park is in lieu of a park dedication fee?
Correct.
And the seconders agreeable to the added condition?
Yes.
Alright. Anything else, any other discussion? Alright, hearing none, we have a motion by Stevenson, second by Schmokey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, this is a recommendation by the planning commission, and decision will be heard by the city council at the July third meeting. Good luck, and thank you. Other business? Mr. Harlecker, you have anything to add, other business?
Um, at this point, um, it's kind of an update, we've got two garl, car dealerships currently under construction, uh, the Honda and Chrysler. We've got the, uh, the two retail buildings in front of Home Depot that are coming along. I know Experience Fitness there, next by Target, is still under construction. Uh, Gander Mountain is close to being finished. Raising Cane's is under construction. And, uh, we did receive a permit, building permit for the Nice Room Building that was recently approved, um, so stuff is, is coming through the pipeline.
I see some digging is going on for the vet clinic.
Yep, yep.
Alright.
I have a question for Mr. Harlecker. My regular monthly question, any development on the Sears Building, the old Sears Building?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Commissioner, anything? entertain a motion?
So moved.
Chair.
I realize you didn't, you had a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We need a journalist here.